So we will open our meeting. Welcome to the Town of Weddington. We will open our meeting Monday, May 11th, 2020. And we will say the pledge. If we will wait for our virtual flag to come up, we will say the pledge. Okay.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, equal, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Okay, we will have a determination of quorum, and I will do a roll call. So when I call your name, if you would just say here. Ann Pruitt?
Here.
Janice Probst?
Here.
Jeff Perryman?
Here.
Mike Smith?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum with all members present. To ensure that everyone has the opportunity to ask questions or to make comments, and to keep council from interrupting or speaking over one another, I will roll call each council member for questions. Please just respond no if you do not have any. I will also roll call each council member when you vote. So please just respond accordingly. The first item we have on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda additions or deletions. And I have two changes to the consent agenda. If everyone would first look at item G, it should read as follows. Authorize staff to execute the contract with HNS paving for an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars as per the minutes dated September 10th, 2018. The second item is, we would like to add, our finance officer Leslie would like to add item H to the consent agenda, which is for the approval of the fiscal year 2020 audit contract with Ann R. Craven, CPA PLLC, for an amount not to exceed eighty-five hundred dollars. Does council have any questions or any additional changes? Ann?
No.
Janice?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Mike?
No.
Lisa?
I have two items that I would like to change the wording for.
Okay.
Item 12A should read approval of new Title VI policy, and then scratch for NC DOT.
Oh, thank you. Yes, okay.
And then item 10 is presentation. It's a public charter school, not a private school. A public charter school in Weddington Matthews Road.
Okay. All right. So we have additionally the presentation for a public school, and item 12A, take out policy for NC DOT and make that a policy or non-discrimination plan and implementation. Is that what you said, Lisa?
Just approval of new Title VI policy.
Okay, okay, sorry, I added. Okay. Okay, so if no one else has any additional changes, I will look for a motion to approve the amendment as amended. All in favor? Ann?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
All right, so our motion passes, and we are on to mayor and council report. Okay, there we go. I do not have any updates or reports to give. I will go through. Ann, do you have any council reports?
I do not.
Okay. Janice?
No. The only thing I would add is, I have had people ask me about the shredding event, and if the state is moving forward with opening up, we will work with True Lion to get a date hopefully this summer for the shredding event, if everybody is agreeable with that.
Okay. Sounds good. Jeff?
No ma'am.
Mike?
No.
Okay, all right. Public comments. The council will hear public comments by email only. The town clerk Karen Dewey will read all comments into the record. All comments will be maintained as a public record and included into the minutes of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes per comment. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole, not individuals. Comments are expected to be civil and within reasonable standards of courtesy, and comments that include vulgarity, slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threats will not be read into the record. Karen Dewey, do you have any public comments?
I received one public comment from Bill Dieter, and he says he just wanted to make a few comments for Monday's council meeting. Number one, you're doing a great job with planning board and council meetings during this COVID-19 situation. I know it can be very difficult. Number two, when you discuss a training burn for the old house on the Matthews property, please consider any damage that could be done to the large oak trees surrounding the house. Number three, I don't want to be a squeaky wheel, but I hope you will consider some financial support for the Optimus Park slash WCWAA in the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. The park opened yesterday for non-organized activities with signs stressing the need for six feet social distancing and groups of ten or less. Many people came to the park: teenagers, kids with parents walking, playing catch, et cetera. They're looking for any outlet to the self-quarantine of the last several months. COVID is having a major financial impact on the park. As you know, the park is used heavily by Weddington residents. Thank you for listening, Bill Dieter.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Bill Dieter, for submitting your public comment. We appreciate input always from our residents. Public safety report. I will turn to Officer Dodd, who is on with us.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Nothing really to report. You know, this whole COVID-19, we've kind of been hunkered down. Been hitting a lot of the neighborhoods lately, that way we can all be seen. We had had a couple thefts in Vinish Creek, and I want to say the falls. A lot of the legal dumping going on still in Vinish Creek. Deputy Crop nine, Deputy Hunter are trying to figure out who's doing it. But other than that, our speeding, we haven't really had to do any traffic stops because with all the COVID-19, they really don't want us around people touching other people's stuff. Other than that, nothing really new to report, just ready to get back to normal.
Good. Very good. Thank you for that. Does council have any questions for Officer Dodd? Ann Pruitt?
No.
Janice?
No.
Jeff?
No ma'am.
Okay, Mike?
No.
Okay. Consent agenda. We have several items on our consent agenda. Lisa, if you could briefly go over the details of each item for clarity, that would be great.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right. So consent agenda item 8A, our total budget for the year is two million three hundred and eighty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which includes a one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar appropriation from fund balance for the Tilly Morris Roundabout. The tax rate will remain same. So tonight, we're calling for a public hearing to be held June 8th at seven o'clock at Town Hall. Item B is to release the performance and maintenance bonds for Bromley subdivision phases seven, eight, and nine. We have all the outside agency approvals as well, and the engineers did perform a site inspection, and everything was found to be satisfactory. Item D is authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Union County Urban Forest Services. We had an old contract with them for a few years ago. This year, we plan to utilize his services for our sidewalks, for our new conservation subdivision design process, and our tree ordinance. Item D is a proclamation recognizing May 15th as police officer Memorial Day, and May 10th through May 16th as National Police Week. I would like to take this time to thank our deputies for all their work, especially during the stay-at-home order, and congratulate Deputy Crop, who welcomed a new baby to their home on May 5th. Item E is resolution to adopt the Combaris Stanley Union Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This plan is required to be adopted before the old plan expires June 18th, 2020. The plan establishes the community vision and principles for reducing hazard risk, and further proposes specific mitigation actions. For Weddington, an example is our floodplain ordinance, making sure that structures are not building the floodplain, and continuing our stormwater control regulations. The update demonstrates progress and reflects current conditions. Each jurisdiction is required to approve a resolution adopting the updated plan prior to the date to ensure federal reimbursement in the unlikely event of a disaster in our jurisdiction. Item F, you'll find the budget amendments listed under Agenda Item 11C for the current fiscal year to be approved. Item G is to execute a contract with HNS paving for an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. This was approved back in September of 2018. We tabled, we approved the contract, but we tabled the execution until we figured out the financials of how the residents that lived along that street were going to pay. We now receive the money, so we're looking to go ahead and execute that contract. And last item is the fiscal year 2020 audit with Ann R. Craven, CPA, PLLC, for an amount not to exceed eight thousand five hundred dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, very good. Questions from council? Ann?
No.
Janice?
No.
Jeff?
No ma'am.
Mike?
No.
Okay, so there were no questions for council. I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor? Ann?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed unanimously. We move on to our item nine, which is approval of minutes. Are there any changes to our March 9th, 2020 town council meeting minutes? Ann?
No.
Janice?
No.
Jeff?
No ma'am.
Mike?
No.
Okay, there are no changes to the minutes. I will look for a motion to approve March 9th, 2020 council meeting minutes as presented. All in favor? Ann?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation for a public school on Weddington Matthews Road. We have Ronak Bott, I believe I pronounced that correctly. I hope I did. We have him here that will be presenting and giving a general overview of the private school. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, charter, thank you, of the school, and he will be presenting. So I will turn the floor over to Ronak. Mr. Bott?
Thank you, Mayor Callis, and members of the council. Let me just do a quick audio check here. Am I coming through okay?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. So I'm here representing Tower Institute. We're a North Carolina nonprofit. You need to open a public charter school in Weddington. I'd like to use this time to introduce our school, our board, and discuss why and how we'd like to become part of this community. Would you mind going to the next slide?
Do they ever come?
Fantastic. So our mission as a school is to create an education experience of the highest caliber, that challenges, nourishes, and motivates advanced learners. And when some people hear that, they think, why should we worry about those kids? Won't these advanced learners be...
Actually, they would come, the last I remember, they would come in, to their way through. Really late.
Guys, if you don't have your, if you'll excuse me just one second, Mr. Bott, there seems to be some background noise. If everybody could mute their microphones, I can hear some television or some talking. So if you could, everybody could mute their screens, please.
I think that's better. Thank you, Mayor Callis.
Okay, thank you. Okay, continue, I'm sorry.
No problem at all. So some folks ask, you know, that they think that these advanced learners, which could be gifted students, or highly motivated students, or sometimes students who just learn differently, they think these kids will just be fine. And unfortunately, that's a very persistent myth in education, that these kids don't deserve or need special attention. Now thankfully, as a state, at both the General Assembly and the Department of Public Instruction level, we reject that view. The state program standards recognize that when an appropriately differentiated education is not provided, gifted learners do not thrive in school, their potential is diminished, and they may even suffer from cognitive harm. Now, the good thing is that in many cases, this differentiated education can be effectively provided in the student's homeschool through enrichment and other means. But in some cases, that's not enough, and the best available research supports the idea that some students need full-time exposure to a special curriculum to reach their full potential, which is what we owe them. So we recognize this need, and in order to fulfill it, we applied for and received approval from the State Board of Education to launch Tower Institute as a public elementary charter school to open in the fall of 2021. Now, at this point, you may be asking, who is the "we" in that statement? So that brings me to the next slide. So this is the Board of Directors of Tower Institute. That's me in the top left. I'm a physicist by training. I've worked in higher education, but most of my career has been in business management and strategy. But probably the most relevant thing is that I'm a father of four kids under the age of 10. So I know firsthand the joys and the frustrations of having elementary-aged kids. You may actually hear a few in the background, as my wife is trying to get him to bed all by herself tonight. And you may notice, if I'm in HD, you may notice a few gray hairs, and you can chalk that up to them as well. Now, unfortunately, we don't have time for the entire board to introduce themselves. A few of them are on this call, so if there are questions, they can answer. But I encourage you to go to our website and read their bios. You'll come away very impressed, because we have in this group five doctorates, five masters or MBAs, three previous charter school board members, four UNC Charlotte faculty and affiliates, four with direct experience in elementary instruction, and of course, all eight of us are passionate about this mission. Let me talk a little bit about our beliefs on the next slide. So the first thing is, we don't focus on labels. We think that many children can thrive in our program, and any child can enroll. We're open to everybody. We don't require any kind of gifted certification to attend. Indeed, we think those requirements can end up excluding a lot of children who could benefit the most. So you might think about the boy who's so bored in kindergarten that he's acting out, or the girl who's struggling in reading but capable of doing math two grades ahead, or the children whose attention issues are masking their incredible potential. These are all different kinds of kids that don't necessarily get what they need in their homeschool, and we think we can make a place for them to tell of them. So our curriculum is compacted. Students who progress through Tower will be on track for high-level coursework in junior high and high school, but that's only part of the story. Equally important is giving their kids the tools to think for themselves, instill curiosity, determination, problem-solving, to help arm them for the challenges ahead. And then finally, as faculty, as board members, parents, staff, we want to role model that we all want to continue to learn. We're not afraid to try new things, to accept failure with grace, and resolve to try again. So let me talk more about why Weddington on the next slide. So the short answer here is, we agree on the importance of education in high-quality schools. There are some significant shared values here. So when folks in this town were asked why they moved here, respondents mentioned schools 398 times out of 819 responses in this Weddington community survey a couple years back. That was not a multiple-choice question. That's a write-in. That's amazing that schools were top of mind for so many people. We share that view, right? I wake up every morning trying to think of what our board needs to do to make Tower the best elementary school in the state. We want to be in a community that values education as much as we do. Let's get even more specific. So why this location on Weddington Matthews Road? So unfortunately, somehow, it looks like the map got lost in translation when we brought it over. But that was supposed to be on the right-hand side, a map of the Weddington area, and Weddington is right in the middle there. And when we open in 2021, we'll be the only charter school in Weddington town limits. Now, there are some other charter schools nearby, but as far as based on our research, there's none that are actually within the Weddington town limits. We think that's an opportunity to become another neighborhood school for the community. When we compare ourselves to other schools that may have a similar mission, we're at least 16 miles away, right? So first of all, those schools that are largely north in Charlotte, to central Charlotte or north, have long wait lists, so it can be nearly impossible to get in. And even if you do get in, if you're a student from, you know, the Weddington area or South Charlotte, you're going to be on a 90-minute commute, morning and afternoon, to go to one of those charter schools, or if it's a magnet school and see a mess. So we don't think a child should have to sacrifice family time, after-school activities, or endure a 90-minute commute to find a program that's good for them. Finally, we think that charter schools are part of the public education system. We want to partner with the schools that are around us, and also, we can be part of the solution, right? So we know that some of the community members here have identified overcrowding as a concern, and, you know, one way we can help takes a little bit of the edge off of some of the crowding that's happening at Weddington and Antioch Elementary. So more school options in the area allows us to balance the load of students a little bit better, and we can create a better educational experience for everybody. So I'd love to understand more about what the community would like to see on the next page. So we believe that great schools are an integral part of the community, right? Any great school has to be a part of the community where they're located. They serve as gathering places, they adopt some of the character of the neighborhood around them, and in turn, they help to shape the neighborhood. And at their best, they represent and reflect the local identity to the larger world. So we looked at some of the community needs identified in the 2018 survey. We put them out on the screen here for discussion, but we hope this is really just the beginning of a conversation about how Tower and Weddington can work together. As I mentioned before, we have an expert board of directors responsible for governing our school. We all live in the greater Charlotte area. As time goes on, once we open and have students, we'll add local parents to our board as well. But today, we'd like to ask the town council to also consider nominating one of your own members to join our board of directors, right? We know it's not on your agenda today, so not expecting action today, but if you would consider that, we think it would be a fantastic way. From the very beginning, our school is in touch with the community, and it was responsive to the town's needs, and we want to evolve with the town. Lisa, if we go to the next page, let me talk a little bit more specifically about our needs and the site. So our school will have 378 students, so this is a small school by almost any comparison, for K through 5, kindergarten through fifth grade. So we expect that needs around 30,000 square feet in terms of, you know, one or two or three buildings, depending on how it comes together. We'll want a gym, a playground, a small playfield. We found an undeveloped site on Weddington Matthews Road, 5932. It's around 16 acres today, 700 feet of road frontage. We're doing diligence on that site. We're optimistic it'll prove suitable for the school. Now, we don't yet have a concept plan. We're still in the works on that. But we did provide more of a generic illustrative sketch, just to provide a sense of scale of what this might look like, right? So this is, for those of you who don't recognize it immediately, this is just down the street from the Bromley neighborhood on Mettington Matthews Road. And I'll caveat it once again, that is not a concept plan at all yet. It's just a generic sketch, so that we can start to see, you know, could you fit a school on this property? Let me talk a little bit about the timeline on the next page. So our planned opening, if everything goes well, we would start the permitting process this summer, begin construction towards the end of this calendar year, and plan to open in the August of 2021. Now, of course, besides construction, there's 1,000 other things that are happening in parallel to in order to open a school. One thing that you'll see publicly, of course, is that we'll have outreach and information sessions starting this summer throughout the rest of this year. Enrollment would happen around the end of this year, December, January, February, and then the rest of next spring and summer. Orientation for new students, parents, onboarding for new staff, with the hope of getting everything aligned and in ready to go that August. Let me go on to the next page and just wrap things up. I could spend hours talking about this school. You know, I'm passionate about it, but I try to keep things brief. I encourage anyone with more questions to reach out to us with email. You can also visit our website. There's an email sign-up list you can sign up for if you want to be abreast of things as they develop, and be aware of the timeline and other public events we might have. So I want to, let me just thank councilors in advance for giving us this time. I hope this is the beginning of a conversation, and I do remind you, we have this invitation to take partner board, and I hope you would please consider nominating one of your members to be part of our effort. I'm happy to take questions if you feel it's appropriate now, or we can move on to the next item in the agenda. Mayor Callis, back to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. It's difficult to do things like this virtually, so we appreciate your effort in making this work out. That's very nice. Do we have any questions? I will go through and give each council member an opportunity to question or comment. Ann Pruitt, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Bott?
Actually, I do have two questions. The first one is, on your application with the public schools in North Carolina, you based your research and data on the Charlotte Mecklenburg School District, as you are targeting South Charlotte and students from Polar Ridge, McKee, and Providence Springs Elementary, and the need for additional educational options for those schools. From the location in Weddington, you're going to be within less than a two-mile radius of the other schools that you pointed out, Union Day, Antioch Elementary, Weddington Elementary, and Weddington Christian Academy. What research have you done, or have you planned to document that the local need for another elementary school in Weddington?
It's a great question. So we have a charter amendment that's in progress with the state. When we first submitted our charter application, we made note of the fact that we're going to be doing a real estate search, and while we're trying to serve this broad community that's in the South Charlotte metro area, we don't know whether the real estate will turn up in Charlotte, in Weddington, in Pineville, in Matthews. We just didn't know. So we left that a little bit of an open question. After about six months of searching, we found, we think this is the best site. There are, in general, we've all been blessed, and, you know, I'm a father who has kids in these schools, frankly, that we have some pretty strong schools, both in the southern part of CMS, and in, you know, Weddington, Antioch Elementary, and some of the other charter schools here. Now, that being said, a school that is very strong in general, scoring highly on all the public report cards and ratings, doesn't necessarily serve every single subpopulation effectively. This is one subpopulation that, based on our surveys, we think that there's huge demand for, parents want to see schools that can do, provide a more challenging and more rigorous curriculum. And any school that we've seen that offers anything like this has a long waitlist. So we think that there will be significant demand, both from folks that are in Mecklenburg that want to come in to the school in Weddington, as well as Union County more broadly. You know, in speaking to a few teachers in Union County, we were able to reaffirm that view.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate what you guys are doing. I've always been a proponent for kids in elementary, you know, schools, and in education in general. But just real quick, since the public per pupil funding is based on the district in which a school resides in, which means our Union County school board is going to be responsible for providing the funding from our local current expense fund, do you know the financial impact on the Weddington residents, and will the student enrollment be limited to Union County, or since we will be the ones funding the school?
So the funding is determined... So the funding is determined partly by, partly, part of it comes from the state, and part of it comes from the counties, at least in our first year of operation. It comes from the counties from which the students are, in which the students currently reside, right? So if we had, let's say for the sake of argument, half of our students lived in Mecklenburg, that funding would be allocated from Mecklenburg. In future years, what would happen is the overall count of students that are attending within Union County, as that number increases, the allocation that the county as a whole receives from the state would increase. So there shouldn't be any real net impact. It'll, it'll kind of offset, right? The county would get more funds from the state. Some of those funds, a proportionate share of those funds would get allocated to any charter schools that are located in those counties. So there shouldn't be any significant...
It's based on where the students come from? I thought it was based on where the school actually was.
It's, it's kind of a complicated formula. If it's a, if it's a new charter school in the first year of operation, it's based on where the student resides. And then in the long term, once the state can readjust the allocation formulas for the state, for the counties, because now they know we have two hundred new students that are attending a school in Union County, the state will increase the Union County allocation overall, so that the, when those funds trickle through to the charter schools, the rest of this district doesn't see any detrimental impact.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. It's, it's an important question.
Okay. Anne, is that all you've got?
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Janice?
I think Anne asked some really great questions regarding the population of the school. What about the location of the school? Obviously, Weddington has a lot of issues with roads and traffic, because we are on the western edge of Union County. A lot of Union County's traffic goes right through Weddington. So how would you address, or would you be willing to address, if we approve a school, how you're going to address the traffic on a two-lane road, adding all the additional traffic that you're going to put in an area that already has, within a two-mile radius, a lot of schools?
Yeah, so as part of our process in examining this site, we would work with the DOT to do a traffic study, to understand exactly what demands would be placed on the local roads. So, yeah, and then we'll have to understand what accommodations or investments need to be made to, to ensure that it does not become too large of a burden.
And, and the attendance, the amount of students you said, the number of students you currently have that you want to have for original, the original setup day, is that going to be the attendance that you would have in the future? Or are you planning on expanding the school in the future?
The, the number that I cited, three seventy-eight, is the, is the maximum, and that would be reached in year three. So in the first year, we would actually only have two hundred and forty students for grades K through three, and then we would add the fourth grade the following year, and the fifth grade the following year after that. So by year three, we get to three seventy-eight.
Three seventy, okay. That's it.
Okay. And just kind of to, to follow up a little bit behind her question, if you don't mind. How are you gonna? How are you going to kind of ensure that that, that those numbers stay? You know, at three hundred and seventy-eight, that, you know, how many kids is that per grade? How many classrooms per grade? So if you're three hundred and seventy-eight, that's fifty, sixty kids per grade, right? Something like that?
About sixty, yeah.
And I'm guessing you'll have smaller classes? So, I mean, do you have, I mean, how, how are you going to cap that if that becomes very popular and it's a great, you know, great, now all of a sudden you have a long waiting list and the desire to expand? I mean, what, what, where does that?
So we are planning to have three classrooms per grade. If we expand, I mean, we're going to invest a certain amount of space. We won't be able to hold more than, add extra classrooms, because we won't have the physical classrooms to do so. I don't think that, if you ask me today, I don't think we'll be able to maintain the same level of education or the experience that we want to offer if we expand it, right? So we have a certain, we want to be a small school. We want to have reasonably small classes. So that, that's part of our mission.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to kind of follow up with that. All right, Count, Mr. Perryman?
Yes. Well, a couple of my questions have already been touched on. First was the traffic issue, which is, we've already seen from past experience of another school that's opened up, the issues that can cause. So that would definitely be high on my priority list, as far as if you were presenting something to us for approval, is what that plan would be. Mayor Callis has just touched on my second question, which was expansion, you know, and if it becomes as popular as, as you hope, and certainly I would hope that it would be, you know, great schools are always a tremendous asset for any community, you know, what your plans for the future might be if you wanted to, to expand or increase your operation. I think you touched on that. I guess the last thing I would ask is if it would be any difference between students that would be living in Union County being given first priority versus students living outside the county or with a charter school? Does that matter? I mean, are you strictly, in other words, if it's, if it's located in our community, I'm hoping our community citizens, our residents, would be able to have some type of priority for their students or their children to attend the school?
Yeah. It's, so by state statute, as a, as a typical public charter school, we can't have any preferences associated with where a student resides, right? So any student in the state of North Carolina can apply, and they have to get, give equal credence. Now, there, there was, if you recall, a lot of discussion in the last year or two about municipal charter schools, where towns can invest and host their own charter schools under the, under the governance of the town council, in which cases, then there could be priority for the town's residents. But that's, that's, that's a totally separate issue, and it's quite contentious as well.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Okay. Councilman Smith?
Well, everybody...
See you on the screen.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah. Okay. So everybody's pretty much covered the questions that I have, and I will just kind of make a statement more than questions, because they were all been answered. But I do have a concern about the traffic that this might generate on such a, a small road. I would want to see what the plan is that you have traffic-wise to mitigate any problems that the, the school might cause. So that's, that's kind of top of my list to see what you have there. But other than that, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
It was more of a statement than it was.
Okay. So, and I'll just kind of touch on that just a little bit. That clearly is a huge concern, traffic. And in this, in where we are right now with, with funding and with DOT and, and the halting that they've put on all the projects that we have, particularly in this Weddington area, that, that's where the big concern, I think, for all of us comes in. The pub, public and charter schools are no longer required by the state to fund traffic impact as far as, Lisa, help me, as far as improvements, improvements? And, yeah. So are you all willing to financially do things that the state may not be willing to financially support, but that we would potentially require to keep traffic from backing up in that area? Does that make sense? I mean, that, Weddington Matthews Road is a very, very busy road, and to have a line of traffic, because DOT doesn't want to put in a long turn lane, you know, we can't have road, a car rider line backed up in that, or any kind of big traffic issue.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're saying, so...
I mean, I struggle with that, and I apologize. I'm just trying to see if financially you guys would be willing to, to, to do things that DOT teammate may not want to do.
Um, you know, I'll, this is not my area of expertise.
Okay.
But based on what I understand, you know, if the DOT study requires that certain traffic improvements have to be made, then those traffic improvements have to be made. At first, on the, the charter school has to pay for it. Now, we may get reimbursed by the state after the fact, but I think we would have to put the, lay the, lay the cash out to begin with. Now, all that being said, look, we're a, we're a grassroots nonprofit organization, right? We don't have any independent sources of funding, other than what we're hoping to build to as we, as we attract students. So we don't have, unfortunately, deep pockets, but we want to be good neighbors and good citizens. So we are absolutely, of course, willing to, to work with the town and figure out how we can come to a resolution. We don't want to, we don't feel we're fair to burden, burden town residents who are not part of our school with, with inconveniences associated with traffic. Now, one thing I can tell you that we are planning on doing, which, which may help alleviate it, is we are planning to have school buses. And so, you know, each school bus that we can run takes, you know, thirty or forty car trips off the road, morning and afternoon, right? So...
As long as those students are utilizing those buses. Put the kids on the buses.
So we can, we can, we can come up with some incentives to try and make them ride the buses. We'll figure that out. But I mean, I'm trying, I'm, I say that by virtue of saying, look, there's a lot of ways we can come out this problem, and we'd like to work with you to figure something out.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, we, again, appreciate so much you joining us, and I think council has gotten all our questions answered, and we will, we will wait and see what the next step is for you all.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Okay. Moving on to old business. We all still there? Eleven A?
Here.
It's funny when the screen disappears, I want to make sure everyone's still there. All right. Eleven A, social media. We have an updated social media policy. Lisa, if you will briefly go over the summary of what those changes are, that would be great.
Thank you. Tonight, staff's requesting the approval of a social media policy. The town didn't really have a true policy. In the past, there was a memo in the policy file that had a few bullet points about social media, and included keeping the page positive and upbeat. It referred you back to the town website for any town business, and that we only post events. It also said something about removing any comments to the post, which is illegal, and had some information about which staff member would lead on posting and removing that information. New policy reiterates that the site will be used as a vehicle for communicating the town's message, and shall not be utilized as a public forum. Talks about posts being professional in nature, always conduct in accordance with the town's communication policy practices and expectations. Posts and comments are public record, and all communications are subject to North Carolina Public Records statutes, and it requires us to post a statement on the site about it being moderated and not intended to be a public forum. Once posted, we reserve the right to delete any vulgar language, personal attacks, or offensive comments, and we can also remove comments that are spam, advocate illegal activity, promote or advertise particular businesses, services, or political organizations, infringe on copyrights and trademarks, use personally identifiable information, and anything that contains endorsements regarding candidates for office, political issues, or political municipal county, state, or federal initiatives. The policy is up there on your screen, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that, council. I will go through and ask, Anne Pruitt, do you have any questions?
No.
Janice?
No, I do not.
Jeff?
No, I do not.
Mike?
No.
Okay. All right. There were no questions for council. I will look for a motion to approve the updated social media policy.
So moved?
Thank you. I didn't give motions before. All in favor, Anne Pruitt?
Aye.
Janice?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed unanimously, and for the record, Janice Probst made the motion. Item eleven B, update on our critical intersection analysis. The intersection of Forest Lawn and Potter Road was identified by the intersection study we conducted last year, and was added to the 2019 Union County Critical Intersection List for a redesign and improvement. Lisa, if you will go over the information from the public comment period and what the recommended design is?
Yep. So the website on your screen was sent out to the public, the Solicit Public Comment. It included an overview of the intersection and the project schedule. Right now, we're in May of 2020, we're finalizing the design concept and presenting it to the town boards. In June of 2020, we'll finalize the intersection recommendations and design and cost estimates. What was shown was alternative one as a roundabout. Tabs on the screen that you can click to find out more information. So this says, shift the current intersection alignment to improve approach and angle for safety. The old alignment was further down south. This is to remove the existing pavement. The roundabout design improves traffic flow and safety, and it creates a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot dedicated through lane for heaviest volume movement. You can see some of the driveway connections as well. So, so those residents still have a connection to the, the new alignment. Alternative two is a signalized intersection. It includes a three-hundred-foot left turn lane from Forest Lawn Drive to Potter Road, again, removing the existing construction, which used to line up down here. The, the biggest issue with this one is the five-hundred-foot left turn lane from Potter Road to Forest Lawn Drive. So that turn lane went almost down to the Wedgewood subdivision, or past the Wedgewood subdivision. So a lot of cars would have issues getting out of, of these subdivision roads with the traffic backing up. And you can see the size of that turn lane due to that heavy movement. We were able to provide feedback with positives and negatives about each alternative.
Lisa, so just real quick, I don't think on the screen that, did you, were you supposed to have the maps up on the screen to the actual, I'll turn, the actual routes? Because I don't see them up. I heard you clicking, and I just wasn't sure if the intention was for you to have those maps up.
It must be only sharing the PowerPoint and not my...
Okay. Okay. I mean, we have them, we have them in there, they're on the, the website. I just wanted to make sure.
It's not doing.
What are you guys seeing right now?
We're just, I'm just seeing the, the Weddington eleven A discussion of social media policy. That slide. And I just don't know if your intention was to have the, the actual...
There, there it is.
There it goes. There it goes.
We had it up on the website and had information like popping up where I talked...
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I just heard you clicking, and I realized you were, you were walking through. So if you just, if you just, we'll just go through that briefly again, I'm sorry.
Yep. So the, so the biggest concern with this alternate two is this turn lane. It's a five-hundred-foot turn lane that went way past the Wedgewood subdivision and...
Right.
So the preferred alternative with the, with residents who filled out their survey was...
The roundabout.
The roundabout.
Okay.
We thought it improved the safety, it had a better traffic calming effect, and...
Okay.
Moving without delay.
Okay.
I'm looking for a, a motion to move ahead with that first alternate, which is the roundabout.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Questions from council? Anne?
No.
Janice?
No, I do not.
Jeff?
No, ma'am.
Mike?
No.
Okay, there were no questions, so I will look for a motion to approve the alternate one, which is the roundabout for intersection at Potter Road and Forest Lawn.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, Anne?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay, very good. And for the record, that was Jeff Perryman that made the motion. Item eleven C, discussion of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one proposed budget. Leslie, I will go ahead and then turn this over to you and let you go over our budget.
Yeah, sure. They're in the packet. It consists of basically three different sections. The first is the summarized budget by department and type of revenue. It's got a five-point-two cent tax rate, total revenues of almost two-point-two million, expenditures of almost two-point-four million, with a hundred and eighty-nine-thousand-dollar fund balance appropriation. And it should be noted that that appropriation is for the Tilly Morris Roundabout. And I don't want it to be confused that we are operating in a deficit situation. That roundabout has been budgeted in previous years and been delayed, so it's essentially pre-funded. We have saved the money in prior years to use to fund it when it comes due. So that's, that's what that appropriation is. It's not a a negative. We have the the current year expenditures and revenues balance. That is just paying for a prior year expenditure that was never, you know, came due.
Okay.
So that, that's what that is. The next two pages are the detailed line item, summary, you know, of what that summary budget is. And then the final page is the non-operating revenues and expenditures. And that's got the highlights in yellow. Those highlighted items are things that have changed since the budget was presented in March. And it's just to draw your attention to what they are. Basically, we had, I think Lisa's had some discussions with the woods, so we might have some additional sketch plan revenue coming in for that. It takes into account potential anticipated effects from COVID-nineteen. We think that our sales tax revenues will decrease, at least for the first quarter of next fiscal year because of that. We think our sale, our ad valorem collection percentage may be down because people are going to be in more of a financial hardship. So we have reduced ad valorem taxes and sales tax revenues to kind of account for expected declines in those areas. And I'm looking at the attorney fee line, which is the U D O. We reduce the amount for that because we have been finding that the Karen is able to do some work on that as part of our retainer balance. So we don't think that we'll spend as much additional money on that. We can absorb some of that in our our regular fees.
Good.
So we have the software, financial software package. Since we did not have to spend Tilly Morris money roundabout, we are front-loading that into this current year. And the only amount that's in there for next year will be the residual costs associated with implementing that software. There is money for the park. It's in two different places. We've got fifty-eight thousand under the grounds and thirty-six thousand under consulting and contract labor. We think, we've also got some money in this year's budget to pay for Cardinal going through their first two phases of of park design. And between all of that, we need sixty thousand to move light poles. We need grading money. And over the course of this year and next year, hopefully, that'll be enough to fund those activities. That being our park money, you, there is a line for W C W A A. I know they requested money. We've got it currently at zero. We have given to them significantly in the past. We're investing a lot of money in our own park, which can be used by everyone. And with the revenues reductions that we anticipate, it just didn't look like a good good year to to do that. So, and then I have pretty much it. So, yeah, the COVID-nineteen U D O, park, and technology were the big, big items in there. So. And this will be the budget that we'll have a public hearing on. If you guys have any questions, let me know.
Okay, um, so I will go through very quickly. Anne, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't, but I appreciate you getting through all this. I know it's, I'm not a numbers person, but thank you for getting everything done.
Very good. Janice, do you have any?
No, I discussed my questions earlier with Lisa and and Leslie, and I think everything's been answered. And I do appreciate everything that's been detailed, and I think everything looks great.
Jeff?
No questions. I'll just echo Janice's comment as well, that I spoke with Leslie and got my questions answered, and I appreciate all the hard work.
Okay. Mike?
I'll be the broken record. I did get my my questions answered by Leslie earlier, and nice job, Leslie, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all getting with me ahead of time, too. Still good.
Okay, so thank you for that. I just will kind of reiterate, we have gotten a couple of, you know, emails, and I have had some emails from Bill Dieter, who is the one of the officers of the Optimist Club. And it's my understanding, based on what council feels right now, that funding for the W C W A would that's okay, would be better suited just not to have that as a line item and, you know, use that for our park purposes that will benefit all our residents? Is that, is that what I'm hearing from council? And I will go through and just make sure. Anne, is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so this is not up for consideration, so we, there is no motion invoked, so we will move on. Thank you, Leslie, for that. You do fantastic.
Thank you very much.
What is that, twelve, twelve A, new business, approval of the Title VI policy? Lisa, do you want to have, do a reporter, are we going to just turn this over, and you want to let Karen?
Karen.
Karen Walter. Do her.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to do it, since it's the big boring document, but this is the a actual just written policy plan and implementation plan for the town of Weddington's nondiscrimination policy. We already do this. So just so you know, the town already requires our contractors, and we ourselves pay attention to vendors and the people that we offer our programming to, to make sure that we are doing it in a nondiscriminatory manner. Said, the federal government requires a formal Title VI plan under, Title VI is the nondiscrimination civil rights bill that was, that first was passed in nineteen sixty and amended through nineteen eighty-seven. But the federal government does require proof of an actual plan and implementation in order to receive federal funds. While we are generally not the administrator of any federal funding, N C D O T is probably the most likely source of administering federal funds for any of the projects that receive federal dollars that happen in the town of Weddington. Even the D O T, through chain from the federal government, requires that we have this policy in place when they are receiving federal dollars for Weddington roads. It also is likely to happen if the county would get any grants for public infrastructure, and then we would need to have this policy in the event we ever wanted to apply for any federal grants. There are several out there that the town could apply for when the time came, that it parks and environmental things. So this is just a good piece of paper to have in our, in our arsenal when the time comes for any, any, anytime we want to have access to the money. So, like I said, this is basically our discriminate, anti-discrimination policy. It tells what the town does, and in the event there's a complaint filed, it explains to anybody who has a complaint of discrimination in town processes involving federal funds, how the town handles it. So I do recommend that you all approve this tonight so that we have this taken care of. The reason it's prompted is D O T has sent out a survey to all the municipalities, I believe, and counties, confirming that we all have these policies in place so that they can check their box on their federal funding applications. So if I'm happy to answer any questions about it, but like I said, we already do this. It's already in all of our contracts. But this is sort of the formal document that we'll look by when the time comes. And Mary, you're, yeah, if anybody has any question.
Sorry, mine was muted. Council, Anne, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
I was talking away, waiting for an answer. Janice?
I do not have a question.
Okay, Jeff?
No questions.
Mike?
No questions.
Okay, there were no questions. So I'll look for a motion to approve the new Title VI nondiscrimination plan and implementation.
Janice, well, go ahead, that's, that's fine.
Okay, Councilman Smith made the motion. All in favor, Anne?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Item B, discussion, consideration for the removal of asbestos from the house at sixty-nine-twenty-four Weddington Matthews Road. I will Lisa catch up. Okay, Lisa, I will look for you for the report.
During the two thousand and nineteen retreat, council requested staff to move forward with removing the structure at six-nine-two-four Weddington Matthews Road. Staff contacted Chief McLendon with the Wesley Chapel Volunteer Fire Department, who can, agreed to conduct a practice burn on the home. However, asbestos has to be removed before they do that practice burn. Staff received a few similar quotes and requests to enter into contract with the diversified demolition for an amount not to exceed twenty-five-hundred. This includes the asbestos removal, and then they would come back after the burn and clean up the site. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from council, Anne?
No.
Janice?
No.
Jeff?
Only two questions that I just want to get on the record was making sure that we're going to try to salvage any of the hardware, doors, anything fixtures like that, that we could then, you know, if we could turn that into some money that we could then, you know, use back into the park or something like that. I did speak with Lisa about that, and I believe, Lisa, you said you were checking somebody that was going to possibly be able to do that, remove those items. And then I do think that the question that Mr. Dieter wrote about the trees, frankly, I had not thought about that, but certainly if there's some, if the trees are healthy and we've got some nice oaks there, I would like to make sure that, you know, the burn will not, or we can mitigate any damage to those trees during the burn if we can. And again, Lisa told me she could speak with Chief McLendon regarding that.
Okay, very good. That's a great, that's a great point. Lisa, go ahead.
I'll also have the arborist out to make sure that those trees are not rotting or dead or dying as well.
Okay, all right, Councilman Smith, questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, I will look for a motion to approve entering into a contract with diversified demolition for an amount not to exceed twenty-five-hundred dollars.
So moved.
All right, Councilman Perryman made the motion. All in favor, Anne?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Motion passed. Moving on to item D, discussion and consideration of build grant resolution for the county.
I think you skipped C.
C.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yes, I did, thank you. C, consideration with the contract for it. Y'all don't want me to skip that, Leslie. You don't want me to skip that, do you?
You're not skipping that one.
Okay, for, yes, for our much-needed financial software. Leslie, I will let you have the floor. Or well, Lisa's going to give, Lisa's just going to give a brief, and then I'll turn it over to Leslie. Lisa, go ahead.
Leslie, Leslie, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, we've had a line item for this in the budget for the last few years, and we keep putting it off. But I wanted to give you just a little background on on where this is coming from. Our current software is fifteen years old. We paid about forty thousand dollars for it fifteen years ago. That was a big package. We have added some modules and things onto it. The total investment in it currently is right around forty-eight thousand. It still doesn't do things that we would like to do. The company that we contract with currently developing a new platform, they're going to stop servicing the platform that we're on. To switch to the new platform and stay just exactly like we are will cost at least forty thousand dollars. We said, let's look at buying something new and seeing what we can get. There are pretty much two different tiers of financial software packages, a basic and a premium. We had demos from both. The basic tier costs around sixty thousand dollars, and it actually, at this point in time, does less than what we have now. Together with the premium tier, it's almost a hundred and forty-five thousand. But it does everything we have now. It will do online permitting. You can apply and pay for permits online. It will track permits online. Citizens can look up and pay their taxes twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We have the capability to implement purchase orders and encumbrance accounting. So it has a lot more capability. And I think that instead of paying money to stay where we are, it warrants spending the extra to go where we want to be. So that's, that's my spiel.
Okay. And longevity of this, I mean, this is a software, this, this is a long-term investment like, like the other one. I mean, it's
Yes. If we keep it as long as we kept the other one, which was fifteen years, it, it comes down to what, little less than ten thousand a year? And part of that cost is the, oh, sorry, the annual maintenance or service cost, which is only about a thousand dollars more than we're currently paying. So it's just that initial hit upfront that's going to, it's going to be the burn.
Okay. All right, council, are there any questions? Anne?
No, I appreciate you guys looking for different options and seeing what the best financial solution would be.
Okay, Janice?
No questions.
Jeff?
No questions.
Mike?
Just one question, upgrades. I mean, is it easily upgraded if it needs to be, or and what that cost would be?
So, I'm, sorry, my, my dog has decided now the appropriate time to chime in and say, please, but yes.
The, this package that we're purchasing now, at least in the near term, has everything that I think that we would need. I do not know of any upgrades in the immediate future. Lisa, is there anything that you recollect that this doesn't offer that we might want to add on later?
No.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think it's long overdue. Thank you, Leslie.
Okay, very good. So if there are no more questions or comments, I'll look for a motion to authorize staff to enter into contract with Edmonds for financial software.
So moved.
That's Janice.
That's Janice. Okay, uh, all in favor, Anne?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Uh, moving on now to our, uh, build grant resolution, uh, discussion and consideration. Uh, Lisa, I will turn to you for your report.
Thank you. The town of Indian Trail contacted Union County with a proposal for a countywide stormwater study of the interact storm drainage in our road network. Impact on drainage capacity. Union County would serve as the project manager for the study. The intent to identify a series of specific bridges, culverts, roadbed modifications to reduce the frequency and duration of road closures due to flooding from stormwater. A second, a secondary benefit of the study would be a series of regulatory recommendations for the municipalities and counties to implement to reduce peak runoff volumes from new developments. 10 of the 14 municipalities said they would like to participate in a study with most willing to assist with a local match. Union County's emergency management and stormwater staff likewise said the study would deliver value. NC DOT also agreed that it'd be able to use such analysis to guide the project selection process for future bridge replacements and other maintenance projects. Lancaster County was contacted due to the western flow of stormwater to the Catawba, um, portion of the county. They agreed with the value of the study and are willing to participate. The estimated cost for the 18-month study is $750,000 with 20% local match required. The cost will be refined through the work with a stormwater consulting firm who will assist in developing the proposed process, timeframe, and budget. The estimated Union County portion of the local match would be $65,000 with funds not required until fiscal year '22. The application is due May 18th within award notices made in the fall of 2020. The municipal match for Weddington is about $9,000. Staff is looking to commit funds with a grant, which would be, again, tentatively used in fiscal year 2022 and, uh, '23 and then approve a resolution of support to go ahead and apply for the grant. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, um, all right, council, Anne, questions?
No.
Janice?
No, I think it sounds like a, an excellent study. We have a lot of issues every time we have major flooding. We have a lot of road outages, so it sounds like something that the whole county could take advantage of, so I have no questions.
Okay. Uh, Jeff?
No ma'am, no questions.
Mike?
No.
Okay, all right. So I will look for a motion to approve resolution, uh, Resolution R 202003, in support of, in support for the better utilizing investments to leverage development, which is build, uh, grant applications.
So moved.
All right, Councilman Perryman made the motion. All in favor, Anne?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
All right. Motion passed. Um, all right, Lisa, discussion, item 12E, discussion of drive-in movie at Hunter Farm.
Um, I received an email from former Mayor, um, Nancy Anderson about hosting a drive-in movie night, uh, since most if not all summer events will be canceled. Spoke to a company that provides these larger screens that are specifically made for drive-in movies. They're 10 feet off the ground. I think 52 feet wide. They said it would be about, uh, night, it's usually night, about $2,000 to rent the screen, but due to COVID, um, they'll give us a reduced price of $1,500. This would include travel setup, two people to stay and run the movie and, um, a generator, an FM transmitter to listen to it, um, in your car and they'll provide speaker. We'd also have to get a license to rent the movie, um, from, I usually use Swank. From my experience in the past, this is anywhere, depending on the movie, between $250 and $350. So those are the only costs I see the town having to pay. Not sure if you guys want to charge for tickets. Use this kind of as a fundraiser for future events or, um, if you could all have a discussion about that. And then we're looking for, uh, possibly a Friday sometime in June to, um, to have the event. So we're, we're looking for approval up to maybe $2,500 to, um, go ahead and get this event planned and, and going.
Okay, just to clarify, you're looking for that for the current fiscal year then, right?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just check the budget.
Yeah, I think, I think I can, I think I can squeeze you that much.
Okay, um, council, are there, uh, any questions? Anne, I'll start with you.
I think it's a great idea. My only hesitation would be just to make sure that the number of people can be there, like, with all the restrictions right now? That we don't put out all this money, you know, upfront right now without some kind of, if they, you know, lock us down again and where we can't get together, that we've just lost all that money. So if there's some kind of reassurance or something along those lines, but I think it would be a great idea, you know, for the area.
Okay.
I did, um, ask the company and they said they would be willing to refund our money, um, or within six months, um, have the, the, the contract would be good for, for six months in case of rain or storm or.
I think that's great. Okay.
Very good. Uh, Janice, comments, questions?
I think all the, the, uh, all my questions are answered, um, and I don't wanna charge people. I think that the community needs something positive, so I think it's a great idea.
Okay, very good. Uh, Jeff?
I also think it's a, it's a great idea. Um, I, I agree with Janice. I wouldn't wanna charge people to come, but if people wanted to, you know, make some kind of donations, uh, or if we could encourage them, you know, to make donations to any local charities or, or anything that, you know, we might be putting up that, I think that would be appropriate, but I don't think we should charge people to come see it.
Okay, uh, Mike?
I'm in, uh, I'm in full agreement with the comments that have been said and, um, it's good questioning. And, but no, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, um, we'll just ask for Lisa to continue, um, you know, getting, getting some more information together. I, I know, um, we'll have to get with, um, with the folks over at Hunter Farm and you kinda do, um, you know, walk. I know, um, Janice and I kinda mentioned whoever else wants to come and participate, you know, just be a part of it, but, you know, maybe going over there and taking a walk and kinda discussing where the movie theater would, you know, where the screen would be, um, making sure the parking is, is adequate, you know, if there is anything. You know, we don't wanna get over there and then have, have, um, you know, not have done some walks and kind of pre-planned stuff. So Lisa, maybe we can get something like that going and, and, uh, it'll be a lot of fun. We'll have popcorn and, um, maybe have some, throw your flag up or pitch way up and, and eat popcorn or come, deliver popcorn or ice cream or something fun. Yay! Something fun.
Sounds fun.
Okay, moving on. Little things that are exciting these days. Um, update. Lisa?
I received a yield plan for the Woods property. They plan on doing a conservation subdivision, so as soon as the, um, state home orders are lifted, they plan on trying to do a, um, a site walk as soon as we can get everyone together. I attended a virtual meeting with the county last week. They presented a financial update to the Board of County Commissioners last Monday. They have projected a 20% sales revenue loss for the last quarter of the fiscal year. They're projecting this, uh, flat to maybe 1.2% sales revenue growth for next year. They were expecting 3.4%. Um, and they feel that the first quarter of the next fiscal year will be similar to a 20% loss. They lost an additional $415,000 in utilities due to waiving the late fees, um, for, for shut-offs and then, um, another $415,000 in permitting and programming for parks and rec. We also received an update from NC DOT at our last TCC meeting. They were comparing their loss of revenue to the recession back in 2007 to 2009. Over the entire recession, they lost about 6.5% of their revenues and it took them 57 months to recover. Just last quarter, April through June, they're projecting a negative 38% loss to their revenue compared to that 6.5. Um, and then over the next fiscal year, uh, 11% loss. Um, so they get the majority of their, the revenue from their gas tax, which obviously has gone down significantly. Um, which brings me to our Tilly Morris Roundabout. It was already delayed. They were already at their bottom dollar before COVID. Um, it was delayed from this summer to '21. I'm now hearing '22. And I'm sure there's a rippling effect on all of our projects, including the Providence Road and Ray Road Extension.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that update. Code enforcement report. Everybody has a code enforcement in their packet. Any questions, um, on code enforcement? Mike, I'll start with you. You have any questions?
No, I have questions. Good.
Okay. Jeff?
No ma'am.
Anne?
No.
Janice?
Um, the only thing, I think we can take the house at, uh, the corner of 12 Mile and 84. Don't you think that looks like it's completed, Lisa? The house, yeah. I think that once, they finally got that really clean. And it's not rented. Maybe it'll stay not rented.
Thanks for that, Janice. Um, Leslie, do you have anything to add on your update?
I do not. You have the monthly financials. The, I have with the budget amendments, um, not down sales tax revenues for the rest of the, the year. I will not know, um, a true number. It's just a guess at this point. We should get our first reduced distribution the middle of this month. So by the next meeting, I should have a better idea of, if we've accurately predicted that or not.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Very good. Thank you. Um, and transportation, I do not have, um, I don't have anything, Lisa, updated on some DOT money, which is, um, disheartening to say the least, but it just is what it is. So they are having a, um, a Zoom, I guess it's a Zoom, it's a, some kind of a virtual meeting for the CRTP. Was today, the 20th, I believe, and so I'll, um, I'll hop on to that and, um, and participate in that. I, I don't, I haven't seen an agenda, so I don't know what's on it. So I, I don't really have anything to add. Um, that's it. So we will, um, wrap things up here by having council comments. Um, Mr. Smith, I will start with you.
Um, I just wanna thank the staff, uh, for arranging this meeting. I think you guys did a great job and also to the council who helped make this, uh, smooth meeting and, um, and thank you very much.
Okay.
That's it.
Jeff?
I'll echo exactly what Mike said. Thanks to staff for doing a great job in getting this set up. Hope to see everybody in person in June. Stay safe and stay well.
Very good. Anne?
I'll just say the same thing. Appreciate the staff and what you guys do during the time right now and the council and everybody. Everybody stay safe.
Janice?
Echo that. I also just wanna say we wish our residents, uh, good health and their families good health and pray that everyone is back to work. If they were furloughed, hopefully everybody gets back to work and has a somewhat normal life come summer.
Okay. All right, very good. I will just end things by, um, thanking, um, anyone that joined us on Facebook Live. This has been a first time I've, I've participated in a, in, in a virtual meeting, um, first time I have run a virtual meeting and it's, it's very awkward. Um, it's kinda strange. I, I kinda miss having people. I'm, I'm actually at town hall. So I could ensure that I would have, um, no teenagers or disruption and it's very weird sitting here, um, looking into a computer screen and, and not having the people in the audience. So thanks, thank you to those residents that joined us on Facebook Live. Um, I hope next time you can come see us in, in person at town hall. So with that, I will wish everyone safe and, um, and good health and we will see you in June.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah, motion to adjourn. See, I forget stuff. It's just out of whack here.
Aye.
Yeah, yeah, motion to adjourn. Uh, all in favor, Anne?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
All right, good night. Good night.
Thank you all.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you. How do I turn off? Leave.
Leave.
There I go.
I'm ending it.